Okay, we're now off consent. We're gonna go on to item six, Conduct of Business. City Clerk.
Item six A, Adopt a Resolution Initiating Proceedings to Establish or Revise Storm Drainage and Flood Protection Fee.
Hold on. Okay, hold on for a minute. I just saw a hand go up and I don't know if it's for this topic or for the consent. So...
Um, one moment. Paul Wapinski?
Yeah, it's for this topic.
Oh, okay. So, we're gonna go ahead with the staff report and then I'll ask for public comment. So, we have you in the queue. Thank you. All right, so with that, we're gonna turn over the report to Director Tan and to the City Manager, please.
Good evening to the Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the public watching at home. My name is Javon Rogan and I would like to serve as the City Manager. I'm joined in this presentation by our Public Works Director, Jimmy Tan. And we will jointly provide the staff presentation. We also have a gentleman by the name of Jim Steele, who is a finance consultant that also helped to lead the Storm Drainage and Flood Protection Fee recommendation. Part of this presentation will also be given by the contractor that developed the city's fee study. The company is Willdan, and Mike Medee, a senior project manager, will provide a portion of the presentation. So, let's begin. We're here to talk about a proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee. And let's face it, our storm water system is aging and it's deteriorating. Some of our backbone to the system dates back to the 1900s, the 1950s, and the 1970s. And the sad truth is that we have not had the funds to appropriately maintain the system, and a number of the backbone components have reached end of life. Today is one of those rare occasions where you get the opportunity to do something good for today and something good for the future. You can both protect the programs and services that this city provides to our residents from the general fund, while also taking a major step to prevent flooding, property damage, and damage to the environment by restoring fiscal solvency in our flood, in our stormwater system. So, the objective of tonight's presentation, there's a few here. And I'll warn you, this is a fairly substantial presentation, and so we will go at an appropriate pace so we're not here into the wee hours in the night. But we wanna go at a pace to articulate the detail that is necessary. So, the first objective is we wanna provide you with an update on the health of our stormwater system, and we'll overview some of the financial challenges facing our stormwater fund. We'll also present the results of our fee study to provide additional ongoing financial support to the system. We'll present a recommendation for a new storm drainage and flood protection fee. We will explain the Prop 218 property assessment process, our schedule, as well as the community outreach portion thereof. And then we will have council deliberations and actions on the initial proceedings to establish a revised storm drain and flood protection fee. We are not asking for any final decision from the City Council tonight on what that fee would be. We are really asking for the ability to launch the initial steps in looking into having a Prop 218 process to increase the assessor. So, our agenda items for the presentation tonight are seven. First, we will give an overview of our water utilities, all three of them. We will discuss our stormwater funding and the fiscal challenges. We'll review the current infrastructure in our stormwater system, current project, as well as that long list of the unfunded capital projects that we have not been able to beat. We will present the fee study, and again, Willdan Financial Services will provide that presentation. Next, we'll talk about the recommendation. We'll go into some level of detail on the Prop 218 process and our public outreach process. And then, in this order, we will have council questions, public comment, council deliberation, and then direction. So, let's begin. So, here in San Bruno, not unlike a number of cities, we have three primary components of our water system. The first one is potable water. That's that glass of water you drink. Here in the city, we run the water system. There's a network of pipes that delivers clean drinking water to every home and business in the city operated by the city. Next, there's our stormwater system, and that's a system that collects that brown or dirty water, and it conveys it to a water quality control plant that we own jointly with the city of South San Francisco, and that treats sewer water prior to discharging it into San Francisco Bay. And the third part of our local water system is our stormwater system, and that's a network of pipes that collects rain runoff and conveys it to the San Bruno Channel prior to discharging it into the San Francisco Bay. And that's really what our presentation is about tonight. The public and the City Council will know that our water and sewer system, those funds are healthy. Approximately four years ago, the City Council approved a five-year rate structure increase. Because those funds were not healthy, five percent rate increases for the next five years. And so, we are four years through those rate increases, and they have been painful. We've heard that from our residents. But there's significant measurable improvements to the quality of those systems and a number of capital projects that have been completed. But now, we're talking about the last leg of that system. So, the chart that's before you is a long-range financial plan for our stormwater enterprise. And so, there's a lot of data on here, and the council will certainly remember this because this is the exact same slide that we presented to you in May and June of 2020 that show the precipitous decline in our storm enterprise fund balance. And so, in that blue bar chart, what you'll see is, and the axis for that is on the right-hand side. In 1920, the fund had a fund balance of just over a million dollars. And the budget that we adopted, that was to be around $100,000. And then, next year, we're projected to go negative. And so, the fund balance is projected to be negative. And this has been the story for quite some time because expenditures have outpaced revenues. What we'll talk a little bit about is that the average residential property, and essentially, the average property in the city pays $46 a year to fund everything that's needed for our stormwater system. Operations of the people that are going out and running the system, maintenance and capital costs. It's sadly just not enough money to cover the needs of the system. And so, that's just it. The fee that we have now was adopted in 1994. It does not have an inflator attached to it. And as the system has aged and the cost to install those infrastructure requirements have increased, the fee has not increased. And the general fund is the backstop. This is the utility that we have to operate. We have legal mandates to operate this facility and improve it. And so, if this utility does not receive enough revenue to cover its operations, well, where does that come from? That comes from what we call and we know as a general fund. For the public, think of the general fund as a city's checkbook. So, every dollar we spend out of the general fund on this utility is money that does not go into the general programs and services that this community relies on. Everything's from libraries to parks to police to fire, what have you. When this fund is not solvent, the general fund is the backstop, and we'll talk a little bit about that in detail today. So, the next slide shows the current fee. And the current fee is separated in two categories, and this is by our zoning district. And as we get into tonight's presentation, we'll talk a lot about zoning districts. But the first category is for miscellaneous agriculture vacant or condominium zoning district. And there, the minimum APN charges, assessor's parcel number. So, the minimum charge is $23 per year. For all other, largely our residential, commercial, and industrial properties, the minimum charge per parcel is $46 a year, not a month, a year. And then, the per square foot charge or the per 1,000-square-foot charge is $4.19. Well, what does that mean? It means what's in green on this screen. The average parcel under 11,000 square feet pays $46 a year to maintain our stormwater system. Our typical residential lot is somewhere between 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. It's typically, let's say if it's 5,000 square feet, it's 50 feet wide by 100 feet long. And so, that is certainly under 11,000 square feet, and so, that parcel is paying $46 per year. It's worth noting that when this fee was established in 1994, if it had only had a CPI, a Cost of Living Index inflator, the fee would be $80 right now. Nearly double if it had only had CPI. To not have a CPI, the revenue has more or less stayed flat, but as we all know, the costs have. So, the next chart provides a lot of details on the operating costs and the capital expenditures. And I'll just point out a couple things. And so, one beginning in 17, 18, 18, 19, and on. First thing you see is the revenues are relatively constant because the fee hasn't changed. Although, our operating expenditures are not. And the reasons for that are varied. We talk about them at budget time. It's worth pointing out that the 17, 18 number for expenditures is artificially low. The actual budgeted expenditures there was over 1.4 million, but there was money that was not spent out of that budget in some operating and supply line items. And so, thankfully, that year, the expenditures came in a little lower. But what we have been trending is a million or so over the revenue total. So, what does that mean? That means that we have an operating deficit on, we have a structural deficit on the operating side. Next, there's capital. If the annual revenue is even covering capital, well, all of your capital expenditures are either coming from what we call fund balance, what's left over in the account, or there's a transfer in from the general fund. And that has gone up and down with time. And what you see here in 17, 18, there was money pulled out as well as 2021. And you may be asking, well, why are we pulling money out of the stormwater fund and putting it back into the general fund? Well, that's because the fund hasn't been healthy. So, some years, the general fund gives the stormwater money. But sometimes, we have general fund problems that we have to say, wait, wait, wait. You know what? We really can't do that project, and a prime example of that was this year. We delayed some projects that were funded with general fund money that had been put into the stormwater fund, and we clawed back a little bit of that money to the tune of $317,000. But the top-line summary is the trajectory of the fund balance in our stormwater fund has been precipitously declining, and we're projected to end this year with a fund balance of just over $46,000. So, that means next year, we're in the red, and either we're making some really tough decisions or we're just not maintaining the system, or the general fund will continue to be the backstop. And we will talk a little bit more about some of the challenges we've had with having the general fund be the backstop, not just for the adopted annual budget, but for when emergencies happen, because if the fund can't support its ongoing costs, when an emergency happened and a culvert breaks, again, we rely on the general fund, taking away from other resources. And so, that's just that. This fund is a risk to the general fund and our reserves, and the general fund balance is the backstop, and thereby, there's less money for other funds. And as the council knows and members of the public that have been paying attention over the last 12 months is that we spent nearly $1.5 million of general fund money last fiscal year on stormwater projects. That's the slide that happened at San Bruno Avenue. Built on the next slide, and we talked about it right here. So, some notable stormwater system challenges. In December of 2019, we had the landslide at Crestmore Canyon that required the declaration of an emergency, and we expended a little bit over a million dollars to stabilize San Bruno Avenue and to repair the hillside. Again, had to come from our general fund reserve. Next, as the council will know, in January of 2020, there was the discovery of the broken drain culvert near Crystal Springs Avenue, and we discovered that because SFTUC was doing work on their pipeline. They looked over the hillside, and one of our culverts was eroding the hillside. And in a subsequent, at a prior council meeting, the City Council allocated $450,000 from our general fund capital reserve to repair that. We all know a lot about the spyglass undersized pipes, a project that is projected to cost $1.5 million that we do not have the ability to fund and have not had the ability to fund. This is a project that the Public Works Director will talk about. We are sandbagging two homes every winter because of the history of flooding in that area, and so, we sandbag the back of their houses because our stormwater system is undersized and routinely backs up. And so, we are applying for grants. We are hoping that we get a grant, but we need to take a holistic look at the system. And then, as we all know and will see, there's a history of flooding in San Bruno and downtown in our lower-line neighborhoods. And so, what have we been doing about that? City Council will know, about two and a half years ago, we launched a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. And that project was aimed at restoring health in our general fund, but also looking at significant financial risk to the general fund. And that's what we're talking about today. That's what we're talking about tonight. The stormwater fund is a significant financial risk to the general fund. It's critically important that we, for our overall fiscal health as a service provider, that we return solvency to this fund. And we launched the fee study that we're gonna talk about in September of 2020, and we are proposing a 218 property mail ballot proceeding that will begin in March of this year and go through May, subject to City Council approval. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Jimmy Tan, who will talk more about our stormwater system, the infrastructure, and some of our challenges.
Great. Thank you, City Manager Rogan. Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director, I'll provide an overview of the stormwater system first, and I should move along and invite you with some information regarding the stormwater master plan as well. So, here's a quick overview of the city's storm system. The system, as the City Manager mentioned, was originally installed back in the 1900s. So, it's a little bit over 120 years old. The system consists of drainage outlets, which captures the surface water from the roadways and convey the water into underground pipelines as large as 72 inches in diameter, and eventually, you know, into larger concrete box culverts. Some of these box culverts are as large as 10 feet wide and 8 feet high. As you can imagine, these storm systems are much larger than your typical water and wastewater system in size because we have to be able to convey a lot of the stormwater and discharge it. So, the bottom right-hand corner, as you see there, shows an example of what a box culvert looks like. The stormwater system flows by gravity from west to east and discharges into San Bruno Channel, which is located behind the residential properties on the east side of Seventh Avenue and near Tuba Road. Within the city, there are also two pump stations that were built back in the 1960s. Both are owned and operated and maintained by the County of Sematilde. The city completed the stormwater master plan in 2014, and it recommended capacity improvements totaling more than $26 million in 2014 cost estimates, since during inadequate funding, none of these projects have been implemented. As for the stormwater master plan, it was completed in 2014. The system is comprised of six watersheds named A through F, and these watersheds are what is called a drainage basin or attachment. It's an area of land that drains through the common pipe network. In order to determine the capacity deficiencies in the stormwater system, the hydraulic analysis or modeling was performed. And the model included the main trunks in each watershed that formed the backbone of the system. And generally, you know, those storm drains are 24 inches or larger. Local storm drain collection systems, pipelines were not included in the analysis. But the model indicates that the flooding occurs in all six watersheds during a 25-year design storm event. And the problem areas were noted on a system map that was included in the stormwater planning board. And then, two options were considered in developing alternatives or recommendations to address the flooding issues. And one of the options was to upsize the existing storm drain pipelines. The other is to construct what is called a detention basin in a watershed to reduce downstream peak flows and to eliminate any need for capacity improvements projects. So, one thing that the master plan didn't include is the condition assessment of the existing stormwater facilities. Therefore, the recommendations didn't include any improvements based on system conditions. So, here's a map from the stormwater master plan that shows the various watersheds in color along with the stormwater system, that would model. You can see it in green, blue, and red there. Again, these are large storm drain pipelines, and then watersheds are denoted in color, again, from A through F. As noted on the map, there are problem areas where flooding is current based on analysis. You can see a lot of red dots on the right-hand side, near the other neighborhood and even in downtown area. Here's a close-up view of the previous map that shows the problem areas resulting from the model. And the locations, again, are indicated by red dots. The model shows that flooding will likely occur along the San Bruno Avenue from Second Avenue to Sixth Avenue. The other areas are clustered near Sematilde Avenue and Huntington Avenue. Two gravity outlets, as I mentioned earlier, and two pump stations are also noted. One is, again, near Pine Street, where we have a large box culvert that discharges into San Bruno Channel, and the other is near Tuba Road. And auto flow, you know, then discharging in San Bruno Channel then flows into a tieback structure that's located near the northern part of the San Francisco Airport and then discharges into the bay. So, here's some pictures of the various flooding events that happened throughout the city in 2014 and 2017. Here's a picture on the left side, Crestwood Drive there. On the right side is San Bruno Avenue in 2014 flooding event. Here is Huntington Avenue near Artichoke Joe's. Again, Huntington Avenue, Artichoke Joe's. And on the left side here, you see the Valley Wood Drive near Crestwood Drive, the intersection there. And the right side is Elton Real near City Hall. This is the property that the City Manager mentioned regarding the spyglass storm drain issue. Back in 2014, it had a lot of flooding issues that happened within that area. On the left side, it was a picture from the person's property in his backyard. Water was overtopping Sharp Park Road, and it's coming into his backyard and eventually relocated or tipped over a shed that he had in his backyard. On the right side, it kind of shows the issue, the video of that. So, the storm drain pipelines located within that neighborhood are undersized. So, there's capacity issues within that storm drain pipeline, and so, it's unable to convey the flows that's needed. So, with that, you know, water starts to come out from the drain that's located in front of that house and eventually flows down Sharp Park Road within that area. So, we're trying to resolve that issue right now with a project to upsize the system pipelines. So, since the master plan was completed in 2014, there were only minimal improvements that were made to the storm system, and most of these improvements were brought to council due to the need for an emergency repair resulting from failed storm drain pipelines or to mitigate erosion. The first, you know, is the Crestmore Canyon Slope Stability Project, which was completed in 2020. The city prepared a local emergency due to the storm erosion in Crestmore Canyon on December 3, 2019. The city then procured services of contractor and geotechnical firm to assist in signing construction of the wall to stabilize and prevent further erosion. And this cost is going to look over a million dollars. And the second, the project that was recently completed by SFTC Contractor, Rainy Pipelines. In January 2020, SFTUC discovered a deteriorated storm drain system, flood pipeline, erosion near the Christian Road and Junipar Serre Park. The storm drain pipeline connects to the drainage outlet located in Christian Road, which collects stormwater from the roadway and discharges to the creek below. And to expedite the work, we recommended entering the MOA, Memorandum Agreement with SFTUC, so their contractor could assist in replacing the system's storm drain and resolving the erosion issue. So, the cost for this work was estimated to be $450,000, and we're waiting for the final invoices to come in from SFTC for that work. The next project is the Masson Box Culvert Replacement Project, which was completed in 2017. And this project was the result of the storm event in 2014, which damaged the box culvert. Two damaged box culvert locations, the top slabs, were removed to replace as part of this work, the one at Masson and the other at Easton. The total cost for this work was about $920,000. And the city also contracted with the NAFI to contract it to perform spot repairs for storm drain pipelines. And this repair work was performed from the city's previous knowledge of storm drain failures or failures found through CCTV inspections. And the total cost for those repairs were approximately $800,000. So, here's just some pictures of the various projects that were completed. Here's the Crestmore Canyon Slope Stability Project. The upper left-hand corner shows the beginning of construction of the wall. Bottom left-hand corner shows the installation of the tiebacks and then the rebars. On the upper right-hand corners, rebars for the walls, and then the finished product in the lower right-hand corner. There's the Christian Springs Road Storm Drain, a project that we had SFTUC contractor construct. The issue was a corroded metal pipeline that basically, you know, was water was seeping through the pipeline and then eroding the hillside. You can see the erosion, the gully on the lower left-hand corner picture. And then, the right picture has a video as well to show you the... The next here is the Masson Box Culvert Replacement Project. As mentioned, this was a damage from the 2014 storm event. The entire box, the lid for the box culvert uplifted, and then it damaged the entire roadway as well. So, the entire location would have had to be excavated and replaced as part of the overall work. So, you can see the damage on the left-hand side and then the demolition work on the left-hand corner, plus the rebars that had to be placed, and then plus the... So, besides those projects, what else were completed? Well, here's a list of various unfunded projects. The first is the Spyglass Storm Drain Project. From the projects, I showed a video earlier, and then this neighborhood experiences flooding during severe storm events due to capacity issues. And staff, as the City Manager mentioned, we've been on-site every single year placing and removing sandbags at the two properties or in the neighborhood. And the design for this project has already commenced. It's currently at the 90% design stage. Since the funding relies on the general fund, staff submitted the Hazard Mitigation Grant Application a while back for this project, and staff has been continuously coordinating with Capitol ES and FEMA representatives on this grant application. If it's approved, the city will receive 75% of the cost as a grant, and it will need to pay the remaining 25%. So, I heard from a FEMA representative today that they are finishing the funding approval process and anticipate to be approved by the end of this month. So, we're still waiting for that approval letter to come in from FEMA for our project here. The only stipulation with the grant application is that we can't commence any construction of the improvements, which will nullify the grant application. And then, the total cost is currently estimated as $1.5 million. Then, there is the capacity of projects identified in the stormwater master plan. None of those projects has commenced, and the total cost is approximately $30 million in today's cost. As previously mentioned, the stormwater master plan didn't include any condition assessments at all. The replacement cost based on those stormwater conditions is estimated to be about $23 million. In addition, there are also municipal regional permits requirements, not in the RAGs, but all the agencies, to comply by installing green infrastructure or implementing regional storm capture systems. And the total cost of installing those green infrastructures is currently unknown. However, the city is currently proceeding with a conceptual design of the regional stormwater capture project. The city secured a $200,000 grant through an EPA... The city secured a $200,000 grant through an EPA Water Quality Improvement Fund. And a little over $90,000 through California Natural Resources Agency towards the preliminary design of this project. So we already have a consultant on board to help us with the conceptual design for the regional stormwater capture project. Here's some pictures that I want to show you of some of the conditions of our storm system. Because as mentioned, you know, the stormwater master plan didn't account for a condition of it. But these pictures were taken several years ago by our, you know, the CCTV camera that we have that we utilize here in the city. So these are pictures of box culverts. These are large structures that conveys a large amount of water, you know, storm water in our system. As you can see, you know, there's a lot of the concrete that have kind of spalled away, you know, from the box covert. You can see the rebars exposed in a lot of these box culvert there. So eventually, you know, through time, these will end up failing, right? Because there's just no, not much support left over the turns where these will end up having, end up deteriorating a lot more and end up sinking into the structure. Here's some pictures of some of the storm drains that we've encountered in the past, you know, the failures. And a lot of the old storming pipelines are made with corrugated metal pipelines. So eventually, you know, those starts to get corroded and starts to fail. You can see the failures in the upper left-hand corner there and then the lower left-hand corners there. And the water does not flow within the pipeline anymore. It eventually seeps into the ground and. So the next, I'm going to turn it over to Will Dan.
Yeah, so we'll have Will Dan come now to present the fee study report. And again, this is our answer. So I think we all agree that the status quo is unacceptable and we have to do something about it. And so Will Dan is going to present the fee study that we embarked upon last year with council funding. And this is part of the, okay, so we know the problem, what's the solution? Mike?
Hello, my name is Mike Madby with Will Dan. I'm been working on the fee study for the stormwater fee since about September, October. So I'm going to give you guys an idea of the various steps that I went through to arrive at the proper fee that would fund all the facilities and also give some of the important findings and determinations and statistics that come from that study. I don't know who is controlling the PowerPoint, but could I get the next slide?
Yeah, we are attempting to do that, but running into a problem. Let's stop share and try.
Okay. So when we were brought on, we developed a scope to get us from the initial study phases to the passage of the fee. First, we review the project information, the budgets, and we worked extensively with Public Works and finance on that. We also pulled property data from the county database and also from county GIS. We have a GIS expert who is able to go through not just the numbers and data associated with each property number, but also the imagery, the satellite imagery and GIS imagery. As mentioned before, went over the budgets to determine the total amount of funding needed to address the city's goals. It's essentially the components are the new construction, the replacement of existing facilities and then the ongoing maintenance. And the new construction is based on the 2014 master plan. The reason that we use that was because of the facilities recommended there, none of the, to date, none of them have been constructed. So even though it was prepared in 2014, it does give us a modern, current list of facilities that are needed. And then we developed an approach and methodology for the fee. We chose to go with impervious area of each parcel. It is, and the reason we did so was because Prop 218 requires a formula that has a nexus. And there is a nexus or a connection relationship. There's definitely a relationship between impervious area and the amount of runoff generated. And then also there needs to be rough proportionality. So when we vary the fee based on the impervious area, then we satisfy that criteria as well. And I'll talk more about that later. And then we also have the task of preparing the report, which we've already done in a preliminary form. Proposition 218 notice, which will be sent to the property owners. We'll be helping out with the public hearing with any questions from the public. And also we will be creating and via a mailing company distributing the ballots to the property owners. And then when those are returned and we come back to, we'll come back to tabulate them and scan them into the system and determine the outcome of the election. So right now, the current fee, it's based on total lot square footage. But I think another feature to consider for the current fee is that it has a minimum. And in some ways, this is a good thing because it's, it means that most of the homeowners, most of the parcels in the city are on the same page. They pay the same fee and they, you know, they're kind of all in it together, contributing. There are some weaknesses with that method though. And also another thing you remember about the current fee, as was mentioned before, it does not escalate over time. So the costs keep going up, but the fee revenues remain the same. The proposed fee would be based on impervious square footage without any sort of minimum and just proportional to that. I think the strengths there, one of the greatest strengths is that it's more closely in line with Proposition 218 and with the guidelines that ask for rough proportionality. Also, it's, there is a closer connection between the amount of impervious area of a parcel and the amount of runoff that it generates or the amount of additional stormwater that the city will need to handle as a result of that property. I'm not seeing the PowerPoint, can you guys still hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, should I pull up my own copy?
Sure, I think you are fading in and out, so you may be having an internet connection. I believe everyone can see the PowerPoint and we can hear you.
I don't see the PowerPoint either.
I also didn't hear it fading in and out, so I'm wondering if maybe the problem is there at City Hall?
All right, so let's see. The impervious area of each parcel includes items such as concrete pavement, concrete pavers, patios, driveways, playing surfaces, pools, pool decks, rooftops, sheds, carports. Essentially, it's anything that when the storm water hits it, it runs off. And most of the time, once that water gains velocity, it will go into the streets and end up in the storm drain system. So the way that we determined the impervious surface for each parcel, you know, we couldn't individually measure the impervious surface for over 12,000 parcels. So we developed a methodology to do so. That involves essentially finding the typical percentage of the total square footage that is impervious for that type of land use. And then also going over the satellite imagery and going over the GIS data to identify any obvious exceptions that would probably not fit within that typical range. So the, after using this methodology, the proposed fees are proportional to each parcel's fair share of the annual costs. And the costs that we're using to be related to this system, the stormwater system, are the improvement, renovation, maintenance and operation of the storm drain system. The reason we're using impervious over the existing lot size model is that the fee amounts are fair. They're directly proportional, there's no minimum, there's no maximum. They represent each parcel's proportionate share of the total costs. The EPA, the United States EPA recognizes this approach. And they do say that this is really the most, the closest way to estimate the amount of runoff that a parcel is going to generate. You can kind of get a sense of that by comparing, you know, say like a public park or open space parcel that might have a little bit of impervious area versus a commercial center, which is generally almost completely impervious. And, you know, the two lots that have the same lot square footage would be paying very different fees using the impervious area estimate. Whereas if we're just doing lot square footage, then, you know, parcels with quite a bit of pervious surface, the grass and that allows the storm water to go directly into the ground, would be paying the same fee. Another reason we use impervious area rather than more complex methods is that we are doing this for the entire city. We, there are accepted methods to calculate impervious area. It's what most people use in California. It's generally accepted as the best methodology for this type of thing and easy to quantify. And yeah, that's pretty much, next slide. So here's a visual representation of a home and the surfaces that we would consider impervious. You can see that the swimming pool, patio, wooden deck and private walkway, driveway and the roofs are considered impervious. You can also kind of visualize how when the rain comes down, how, when it hits those impervious surfaces, it goes to the sidewalk and that's where it would enter the storm drain system. So our first step was to determine the annual budget. We, again, worked very closely with Jimmy and also with Jim Steele to figure out all the different components that would be, that would need to be funded and financed. And for the capital improvements, we're generally favoring the financing method. We'll be issuing bonds to try and get those constructed as quickly as possible. And then for the maintenance, there is an ongoing burden associated with that that also fits into the fee that we created. So we developed a cash flow model that takes all of those expenditures into account and spreads the burden as evenly as possible over approximately 30 years. There's a little bit of a wind down, but the objective is to get everything constructed within 30 years. We determined the total impervious square footage for all the properties within the city. This was done by, again, for each zoning classification, we looked at typical parcels. We did a sampling of those and measured the impervious surfaces. We also kind of checked our work by looking at other studies that are based on impervious surface. And we said, oh, our calculation that we did from GIS does look a lot like these other studies. So we think we probably did it right. And then within each land use category, it was tedious work, I hear. We identified the atypical looking properties and also some that were, that were maybe in a certain zoning designation, but were a different type of property. And we pulled those out and measured the impervious surface individually for each of those parcels. Then we put all that information into a database and took the annual expenditure needs and divided that by all of the impervious surface to get a fee rate. And that fee rate is what we are proposing. And if you want the gritty details of the calculation, then it is in the stormwater fee study, all the details. But here's a few tables that'll give you an idea of the main points. So this first one is just the new construction capital improvement projects. This comes from the 2014 stormwater study. We also applied an escalator since those costs in 2014 are not relevant to what we'd be doing today. We brought that forward based on the construction cost index of the San Francisco Bay Area. So what was 26.4 million is now about 31 million. And then after gathering all of those costs and dividing them by the total impervious square feet, we applied that fee rate to the impervious square feet of each parcel. And here's just a sampling, I guess you could say, of the different zoning categories. I should say a summary rather than a sampling. The median fee will give you an idea of just about what the most typical, middle-of-the-road parcel would pay in each of these categories. You can see that there are four residential categories. The way that we're kind of judging the fee is by looking at the R1 category, the single-family residential. You can see that that makes up the bulk of all the parcels in the city, 8,755. So the median is 154. If there's more impervious surface, then it's greater. If there's less, then it's a smaller fee. But that's roundabout what you can expect for the typical single-family residence. So in looking at the fee, we, again, we paid very close attention to single-family residences. The current fee is $46, again, that's a, it hasn't had any escalation over the years and it's insufficient to fund what we really need. So it does need to be raised. And while percentage-wise, it looks like it's being raised quite a bit to 154, that represents a rate, an increase of $9 a month on your typical single-family home. So we're hoping that, given that it's connected with so many improvements, that the $9 a month will be recognized as worthwhile. We managed to increase our revenues by quite a bit, by quite a bit more than the typical single-family residence is going to be paying. And I'll explain how that happens. One of the, one of the main changes, I kind of brought this up before in the beginning of the presentation, is that there's no minimum fee. And what happens when you have a minimum fee, again, there are strengths. When you tell everybody that they're going to be paying the same fee, it does give them the sense of we're all in together and we're all paying the same amount. But it also has a negative effect in that if most parcels are paying the same fee, it's not quite as proportional. And, you know, you set the fee at a level to generate a certain amount of revenue, but the people with the smaller parcels that are not generating quite as much runoff. but the people with the smaller parcels that are not generating quite as much runoff are, uh, kind of topped up by that minimum. Um, in, in the case of, uh, residential parcels, if, if you have a smaller lot, if you have a, say a 4,000 square foot lot, you're paying the same rate as somebody who has an 11,000, uh, square foot lot. And, um, of course, you're the same land use, so you have approximately the same percentage of impervious surface, but, uh, essentially you're, you're kind of, um, you know, uh, there, there's a, there's a bit of subsidizing going on with, when the minimum fee is involved with the smaller, uh, parcels subsidizing, uh, the larger parcels. By using a completely proportional model, we get rid of those subsidies and we make sure that everyone pays their fair share. And then the other way that this differs is that, uh, we're using impervious surface rather than total parcel square footage. So, um, again, the, the, the homes that have a lot of greenery, a lot of, of large, um, you know, lawns and, and the ones that are located on slopes, they're only going to pay for their impervious square footage. Um, likewise, a, a single family residence that's surrounded by, uh, you know, a lawn and has a backyard with a lot of grass, if, if that is the same, uh, aggregate square footage as a condominium in a condo complex that has a lot of, uh, impermeable surfaces, then they will pay, uh, different rates from each other. Um, because the, the condo complex is going to be generating, uh, more runoff due to having more concrete surfaces and the single family home will be absorbing more than stormwater. So this is how we were able to, uh, get such a large, uh, revenue increase with a, um, with a fairly small, uh, quite, quite a bit smaller, uh, increase on the typical single family residence. We, uh, I mentioned before a cash flow model. Um, it's, uh, it takes into account everything that we need to fund. Um, it'll, it'll really bring the city's, uh, system up to date. We're, uh, anticipating, um, and this isn't set in stone, but, uh, we're anticipating three bond issuances that should give us enough time to, uh, program this money as it comes in. Uh, it's definitely a, a fast schedule for construction, but, uh, if, if we were to, uh, issue all the bonds upfront, then we'd have trouble, uh, spending it all. So it's spread over time. The, the net proceeds in nominal dollars would be 44 million, but, uh, it's spread over the first 10 years, so when you discount it to present value, uh, in, in terms of the facilities that we need to construct, it gives you about 36 million of that. Um, a- again, in current year dollars, we're looking at, uh, a maintenance budget, maintenance operation servicing budget, uh, 1,362,000. And, um, due to us, uh, issuing those bonds that are, will be supported by this fee, we are able to get 85% of those facilities funded in the first 10 years. Um, we, we, we did want to be efficient with our, with our fee also, so what we do is, um, we're using those dollars that come in for maintenance and also for servicing the debt. Um, but there's, there's always a little bit left over and those amounts that are left over will be aggregated into a pay as you go fund to help fund the remainder of the facilities, uh, that are not in that 85%. So over the first 30 years, we're able to get 100% of the facilities funded and that includes the new capital projects, the ones in the 2014 plan, and then also replacing the city's, uh, existing dilapidated facilities. So it, it will be like after 30 years, having a completely new, um, storm drain city, like a, or, sorry, uh, storm drain system, like a brand new city. Um, after we, uh, after that first 30 years, there, there will be, uh, a decrease in the, um, in, in the amount that we need, uh, most likely. And the fee will start, uh, probably going down. It depends on what the system looks like. I mean, there's no, there's, there's, there's no certainty that, that we won't, uh, find something else that needs to be replaced or have emergency events. But, uh, it, you know, the, the expectation is that, um, after we fund the facilities, it'll, uh, it'll go down. And, um, on, after that starts to, uh, decrease, we, we will, uh, again, hold some funds in reserve as a capital reserve to replace, uh, facilities that get broken or, um, ones that deteriorate over time. Um, in general, the, uh, the maintenance component is about half of the, of, of the fees that we're collecting. So you can kind of expect the, uh, the, the fee revenues to, uh, ratchet down and settle in at, at about half of what they were, uh, as long as everything, um, stays according to expectations. So our, our recommendations after completing the study, again, we, we took into account all of the costs to, um, fully update the city's storm drain system. It comes out to about five cents per impervious square foot. Um, that is, that is, uh, comparable to what's being charged in other places that have, uh, done this in the area. Um, the, uh, fee will be, uh, on the residents or the property owner's property tax bills annually. Um, and the proceeds will be used to repay debt on, uh, special obligation bonds. It'll also be used to pay directly for construction and to fund ongoing maintenance operations and servicing other facilities. So that, uh, wraps up my, uh, summary of the, of the fee study. I believe that you guys, uh, have it available if you want to see all the details. Um, so, so, uh, let me, uh, uh, let, let me know if you need anything, uh, further, uh, as you go through it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mike. I'll take it back up and, uh, why don't you hang around in case we have questions? So I'll take us through the next phase of our presentation and that is the staff recommendation, uh, the 218 process, uh, and, uh, the, um, schedule that we have, uh, presented to council in the staff report. So what are we recommending? We're recommending, uh, that the city council adopt a resolution initiating proceedings to establish a revised storm drain and flood, flood protection fee at the level recommended in the Will Dan report. And so that's point 0498859 per impervious square foot. Uh, and that would be levied, uh, as a part of the property tax bill. It's important for council, uh, to know that the, um, a side benefit of levying the charge on the county's property tax bill is that we're paying for. Uh, if there's ever a property that doesn't pay their property tax, uh, it is the county's responsibility to go after and collect, but we're on what's called the teeter plan, which means that once we submit our property assessment file to the county, uh, they pay us in full for all properties, uh, based on the installment payments, uh, and they have the responsibility to collect any uncollectibles. And so, uh, the final action on the storm drainage protection fee, uh, from the council in regards to how much it will be, uh, is not needed until March, uh, 23rd, 2021. We'll, we'll talk a little bit about that in the schedule that's to come. But at its core, what the council should know is that what we are proposing is a significant shift in this fund. It's a critical shift, uh, and a 180 from not being able to cover our O and M and the capital expenditures to creating a model where we can cover the ongoing O and M, we can fund the critical capital needs that we studied seven years ago in 2014 and haven't had the money to do, right? And so that $20 million, that $26 million cost is now another $5 million more because we haven't been able to address it and the only thing that we have done, uh, is address failures, which has cost, uh, uh, millions of dollars, but we haven't, uh, forthrightly gone about, uh, implementing the master plan, uh, that, that we paid for, uh, in, in 2014. Uh, and that project started in 2013. So it's essentially eight years today, uh, from when we embarked on that master plan. Uh, and as has been presented, the backbone of our system, uh, is at its end of life. What's also important to note is on page six of the staff report, there's a really nice chart that talks about the percent that the current fee recovers from residential and commercial. Uh, and we didn't provide the, the chart in the PowerPoint, but I just want to reference it because it's an important note about how the new fee model is more fair. Uh, the current revenue from the current fee is 580,000 and as Will Dan mentioned, the new, uh, revenue would be 3.2 million dollars a year. Based on the current fee, our residential properties pay 90% of all of the revenue that we receive and commercial properties pay the balance of 10%. In the new proposed fee, we more appropriately balance that based on the size of our residential and commercial properties. And so our residential properties will only pay 65% of the revenue, but our commercial properties will pay 35%. Again, a fairer model. So the staff report does include alternatives for the city council to consider, uh, and there are three, uh, and we'll, we'll talk about them now. The first one is do not initiate, uh, the stormwater system fee increase and essentially continue with the status quo. Well, we, we, we know what that will lead to. It will lead to a little bit of what we have now, which is we only, um, cover part of our operations, uh, we utilize, uh, monies meant for other, uh, general fund programs and services, uh, and we use that to subsidize any failures, uh, but largely will not have the ability to embark on any of the needs that we know are needed. Uh, it's also important to mention the project in the Spyglass neighborhood that Director Tan brought up, that 1.5 million dollar project, we're pretty close and we think that we may get a grant to cover that project. But it only covers 75%. So we're still going to have to come up with another 375,000 and the fund is projected to have an ending fund balance of 46,000. Um, and so, uh, an alternative is to say, you know what, now's not the time, uh, for, uh, we know that this is a difficult time to be having this, this conversation, uh, and that is an alternative for the city council, uh, to, uh, to take. Uh, another alternative is to approve the process, uh, and the fee schedule at the amount recommended, which again, for the average residential parcel is approximately $9 per month increase. Uh, but do that, but then also take another action and to delay the fifth year of the increase for water and wastewater. And so as we said, the city council, beginning in 1718, approves five year rate increases for 5% for each of those two utility enterprises. And so our water and our wastewater system, uh, have had 20% rate increases over the last four years. If the city council delays that fifth year, um, essentially saving, uh, property owners that cost, it's roughly equivalent to what the, um, the monthly increase for residential property owners will be, and that's $9 a month. So there, there's a way to save the rate payers of water and sewer, uh, $9 a month and essentially transition that revenue, uh, into stormwater revenue. Now, at some point, we will have to address, um, that loss of revenue in the water and wastewater fund, uh, but this is a mechanism that the city council can use to blunt the impact of the stormwater increase, uh, by reducing, uh, essentially a commensurate increase that, uh, would ordinarily take effect, uh, automatically for our water and wastewater, uh, uh, rates. Subject to, uh, uh, council approval of our, uh, fees and charges annually. The third item is to provide staff with, uh, additional direction about the materials that you've been presented today, uh, and, uh, embark on some other course, uh, to, uh, either continue, uh, uh, how we've been operating now or provide some moderate, uh, level of improvement, but not have the significant, um, improvement in the system that we're talking about now. Next, uh, capital financing for the capital improvements. We talked a little bit about this, uh, with the Will Dan report, so I'll just do a quick highlight. Key point, we're using debt financing to advance capital projects in the life. To do all of those projects now would mean that we would have actually have to charge rate payers more money. So it is a fairer approach to raise rates only enough to cover O and M and debt service and have a little pay go money. That way you bond for it, you pay for it over time, it's fair to charge the residents that will enjoy these improvements that we, uh, would like to make over the next 40 to 50 years and pay for it over time, uh, with bonding. We, uh, are planning a three series bond beginning in '22, '27 and '30, '32. Again, the major backbone improvements, uh, will take place over the next 10 to 15 years. Uh, and, uh, by the time we execute the final bond in 2032 and do those upgrades, we'll essentially have a new backbone of our system. Key point that I do not want council to lose is that there were three components of the new revenue, of what the new revenue would cover. O and M, operations and maintenance, debt service on the capital projects that we know we have to do, and also pay go. Pay go is pay as you go. Uh, and so the new fee would raise enough money, so when we know those known unknowns come up in our collector stormwater system or a, uh, new improvement is needed that is not in the 2014 master plan, we can pay for that as you go, uh, and we won't be having to levy, uh, significant charges in the future because we'll have money for that. There's approximately $18 million of pay go funds over the 30 year cycle where we can do those improvements. Uh, and again, pay off the, the debt in 30 years. Public outreach, we are planning a robust public outreach, uh, effort. We know, um, that this is a tough time to be having this conversation. Uh, we're bringing it to you because we think the needs of the system and the fiscal help of the city, uh, really mandates that, that we forthrightly address that. Uh, and we know that, uh, the larger public is not knowledgeable of, um, uh, our, the challenges in our stormwater system. Some people may have forgotten, 2014 flood or not, uh, have paid attention to the recent failures we, we've had. And so we are planning a public survey, uh, inserts and utility bills, direct mailings to all local properties, as well as mailings to out of town property owners. It's, uh, this is a property owner election. And so we want to touch those people that are actually going to get the ballot, even if they don't, even if they live out of town. Uh, a city manager newsletter article, community presentations, uh, we plan to go to condo associations, um, uh, to our large property owners, to the Realtors Association and our service groups. Uh, really get out there like we have done before, uh, and open up the city and, and go on a bit of a virtual world show now, uh, but articulate the challenge and why the city is proffering this effort. Uh, and we are also, uh, developing a dedicated webpage, uh, which is shown there. Uh, and that public outreach, uh, will, uh, commence through March of 2021. Uh, the council, uh, and the public will remember, we did have a, all, uh, a citywide mellor, uh, in December that had an article talking about our water systems, including, uh, some of the challenges in stormwater. And so now let's talk about the Prop 218 process. This is a process that is, uh, specific for property assessments. It is a, uh, two-step process. There are two property owner ballots. Uh, there's a, uh, protest hearing, so a public hearing that you as a city council will hold to hear protests on this, um, uh, potential fee increase. And the deadline for us to transmit our stormwater assessment to the county is July 31st. So we do have a hard deadline and we are going to embark on this effort, uh, to, to begin it, conclude it, uh, and transmit a file to the county. Either way, uh, on July 31st, we are transmitting a file to the county that will include a stormwater assessment. It will either be the new fee that, that was adopted or the old fee at $46 flat for most, uh, properties. And so just at a high level of the calendar, uh, for the Prop 218 process, uh, we are here tonight. Should the city council say yes and initiate, uh, this process, uh, we will begin with the first round, uh, for the Prop 218. And so that information will be sent out, uh, here on January 22nd. Each of the two processes have a 45 day notice period. And so that's part of the reason why there's, there's an elongated schedule here, but we will send it out on January 22nd. Uh, our public outreach will of course be occurring. Um, there, it will be tentatively a public hearing scheduled for March 23rd where the city council will hear, uh, protests, uh, and open up any protest ballots for that first round, uh, as long as we do not receive protests of 50% plus one, uh, from the parcels that are subject to the assessment, we can proceed to phase two. And so what's phase two or round two? And so we're projecting that, uh, if we are successful at the, uh, March 23rd, uh, we would proceed with the, uh, round two on March 31st and mail out, uh, those notices, which again, have another required 45 day notice period. The, the last day to receive ballots will be May 17th. Uh, the city clerk, this election is conducted by the city clerk's office, uh, would hold a public forum, uh, where ballots are open. And of course, we will have to figure out how we do that, uh, in COVID-19, but thankfully we just had a November election and, and there are examples across the country and in California that we can use. Um, and then on May 25th, the city council, uh, if, um, the, uh, if, so on phase two, we need 50 plus one of the return ballots to adopt the assessment. If that happens, then on May 25th, the city council, uh, uh, would adopt a resolution, uh, imposing the fee and then we will begin the process to transmit that to the county on July 31st. Again, a, a detailed process, uh, Again, a detailed process, but one that if the council says yes, staff is prepared to embark upon. And so again, our recommendation is to adopt the fee commensurate to the recommendations in the study. And again, the final decision from the council on the level of the fee is not due until March 23rd of this year. And lastly, there is a recommended change to the resolution, should the city council decide to adopt that. And if the city attorney is on, why don't I call the city attorney up to just briefly talk about this language change and the recommendation? You did have a revised resolution sent to you today that included this very same language. So Mark, if you're there.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Jimon, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In reviewing the Proposition 218 notices, which are in schedule to go out until later, our outside council actually caught something that the rest of us missed, that I missed, which was there was a, we'll refer to it as a misplaced word in the middle of the fee study, which could create some confusion, both for the fee and perhaps also in the minds of the voters that we wanted to clear up. So in the fee study, section double I that you see here on your page talks about maintaining, servicing, repairing, and operate, operating the system. What the fee study said is operate the aforementioned improvements. And by using the word aforementioned, it suggested that the only maintenance, service, repair, and operation that the funds could be used for were for the improvements listed in I above, which are only the new ones, not the entire system. Well, of course, that's not the case. As you've heard from the presentation today, the, one of the purposes of the additional fee is to continue maintaining the system that exists now, including but not limited to the system improvements that are going to be constructed. Though our outside council was able to catch that and note that probably the best way to address it was simply to have that reflected in the city council's resolution tonight, so that that way, when voters get the Prop 218 notices with this exact language in it, there won't be any potential confusion if somebody happens to read the, you know, some page of the fee study that has that word in it. There's no need to revise the fee study. The fee study is what it is, but what really controls is what the city council says they intend to be. And that would be reflected in the resolution with the edits that we're recommending. So that's the brief explanation. The rest of the language is the same. It's only the revision of little double I there to take out the word aforementioned and make it clear that funds can be used for maintenance, service, repair, and operations of the entire system.
So thank you, Mark. And so for the council on the public, that concludes our 48-slide presentation. I know it was a lot of information. I hope that it was helpful. And the image you have up above is a, the cover page of a mellor that we have already created. Should the city council say yes, so we can forthrightly begin the public outreach and effort? And so that would be sent out to homeowners, and it's a trifold that has a lot of information about what we've talked about and resources to find more. So with that, we will take council questions on the report and the presentation, and then pause for public comment, come back for council deliberations and direction. That concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to everyone for the detailed report, as my colleagues start to raise their hands. I just, on the slideshow on slide number 30, and I can just read it quick, it says, prepare report, Proposition 218 notice, assist with city public hearing, ballot process and tabulate ballots. And I just didn't want that impression to be given that some outside firm is actually tabulating the ballots. It is held through the city clerk's office, it is done like a regular election, and there's checks and balances. If that could just be elaborated on, please.
Sure. So this will be an election that is ran through the city clerk's office, and there will be public viewing of the tabulation of the ballots, but absolutely, we will conduct the election transparently and forthrightly, albeit a little different due to COVID-19.
Yes, good point. And I do want to appreciate again, some of the alternatives. And I know one of the alternatives is because obviously, in these challenging times in COVID and the costs, et cetera, was possibly to defer the regular sewer water increases from use, you said, from one to two years. If it were for a year, for example, what would that do to our overall revenue? Because obviously, it's been a large increase for some time, and so that would almost be kind of like a, I guess you're kind of hit a pass for now, but then in essence, it'll come back, if that makes sense what I'm saying. So, because I know you recommended, as an alternative, one to two years. So what would one year do to us if we, if council decided to say, hey, we need to go forward with this for obvious reasons, but two, we don't want to keep going back to the residents, especially in these difficult times, which I think obviously for 2021 is going to be for several months that we're going to be dealing with what we're dealing with, COVID and all.
So Mayor, first part of the question, if the city council decides to delay that 5% increase for the water and wastewater enterprises, one or both, the funds have a healthy fund balance, and they can meet their obligations and continue without any interruption. The second part of the question, which is exactly how much of that 5% per fund would be lost? We did not prepare that information today because we're not proffering that action before the city council. Should the city council like to entertain that option? You would direct staff to look into that, and we will return at the March 23rd meeting or sooner with a full presentation of what that would entail and what the revenue loss would be. But at a high level, there will be no operational or capital impacts to the fund if that is delayed for a year or two. And the city council can make the decision to delay it to a date certain, or simply to say, you know what, we are not going to have the increase that would ordinarily go into effect for the 21, 22 fiscal year occur, and talk at a later date about when that increase would be reinstated or portioned thereof.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I'll owe it to my colleagues. Colleagues, this is, the manager's asking for questions at this time, and then we'll open it up to the public. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city manager, staff, our consultants. This is a very comprehensive and difficult subject. I submitted my first round of questions last week. I have received those answers. I do want to hear what my colleagues think before I go further with additional questions, and I don't want to read out all my questions and get those answers that I submitted. So at this point, I'll go ahead and pause and start up after my colleagues. Thank you.
Seeing no hands up from council members, I will take that as there is no questions. So Vice Mayor Medina, did you want to go to your questions? Because the colleagues are not raising their hands.
Oh, really?
I have questions, but I'm, I'm, I wanted to wait until after public comment, but go ahead.
We can wait for public comment, that's fine. We normally do it that way.
Yeah, okay. So the city manager's asked in the presentation if we could go to public, ask council questions, and then go to public comment, and then come back for deliberation and direction. So I, you know, respect what staff has asked. So questions from the council.
Good chair.
Councilmember Salazar.
I would just say, you know, I did have a few questions that came to mind, and it was a very detailed analysis. There's a lot of information there. I don't know that a lot of my questions, though, would be pertinent unless we actually pass this. And so rather than get into the weeds and get into the minutia of, you know, funding and calculation of things, I'm just going to defer that, and I don't really have any questions on the presentation at this point, and so I'm okay with moving to public comment.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Salazar. Councilmember Hamilton.
So I submitted my questions in advance and received the answers this morning, just as Vice Mayor Medina did, and I don't have further questions, any further questions I have, I want to do after public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason? No questions?
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I don't think it's going to make a difference right now, the questions that I have. Waiting for public comment. I guess my first question is really around accountability with the 2014 master plan. I'm, I don't, I guess, you know, we've approved a couple of plans since we've been here, and they're not cheap. And so I want, I guess my question is, one, will we be paying for a new master plan? And then associated with the question around master plans, how are we monitoring as a city the plans that the council's approving to ensure that the council's getting regular updates on what actually is being implemented by plans?
For Councilmember Mason, let me take that, and Director Tan will back me up if needed. Annually, at our budgeting process, we go fund by fund, and we typically dedicate an entire day to our enterprise and special funds, and we talk about both O&amp;M as well as capital. And so while I can always speak in detail about the last two and a half years, I know that the practice has been to talk about when we're doing our annual budget, what we can afford to fund and what we can't afford to fund. And unfortunately, you're right, and we talked about it in the presentation, the challenge has been, while we did a master plan, and I think this community recognized, and the council and staff recognized the need for a master plan, without the funding, we have only been able to address things that have failed. And so with regard to doing a new master plan, we do not propose that, and we did not do one prior to embarking on this fee study, because all of the recommendations in the master plan are, we still know those projects need to be done, and when the pictures were taken seven years ago, they probably look a little worse now. And so it covers the entire backbone of our system, and that's the core piece that we need to address. And so we will not be proffering to do another master plan. We will just, if this is approved, forthrightly embark on a debt process to begin those improvements that were identified nearly seven years ago.
Okay, and then the, I don't think the second part was answered, was as a city, what are we doing to ensure that our plans are being? So let me actually just ask a broader question. Is there a place where all the plans are located that someone like myself, who's been on the council for a year, this is a 2014 plan, no increases since 1994? How would I, how would I know, as really part of an oversight board, that there's plans that aren't being attended to? So absent, every year during the budget, you bring to us what the budget forecast is going to be, but I wouldn't know that there's a 2014 plan if it wasn't brought to us. So where are the plans lying? I just want to make sure this doesn't happen again. I mean, 1994, that is a really long time, and 2014 is a substantial amount of time for nothing to be done on this plan, absent an emergency like Crestmore.
So a couple of answers to that question. One, all of our master plans are on the city's website. This master plan is on the city's website. With regard to the capital improvement budget, there's typically a section in our adopted budget that has unfunded projects or unmet needs, and that typically has all of our known, all of our known projects. With regard to the question of, how will you as an elected representative know that we have not made progress on this master plan? The time that we typically talk about that is during budget time, when we go through our capital budget, and I know over the last few years, we have talked about this, and this was one of the core issues when we launched the Comprehensive Fiscal Sustainability Project. It was a holistic look at the general fund and threats to the general fund. And we identified this as a risk in, and we embarked on this project in 2020, after having embarked on prior projects, to restore the health of our general fund. And those were some of our other efforts. For example, there was the Measure G project, there was the TOT increase that occur, as well as the expenditure reductions, expenditure savings, and taking a look at some of our programs and saying, you know what, maybe we need to stop providing that. And we didn't present the slide of the Comprehensive Fiscal Sustainability Project, but there were sort of quick wins, midterm wins, and long-term, and this is in that sort of mid to long-term section, because other things certainly, as a part of the Comprehensive Fiscal Sustainability Project, were addressed first. And now we're on to the next step, which is addressing this, which absolutely has been a significant need for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. My next question is around the parking ticketing issue that has been brought up a couple times with council. So I know that, my understanding from various residents is that one of the reasons that the east side is ticketed and the west side is not has to do with stormwater. And so I just want to, I want to hear, I guess, whether we're going to be addressing this simultaneously, because from what we're seeing, the stormwater is also, the stormwater drainage issue is also on the west side, it's not just on the east side. And so when we talk about equitable, which was used throughout the staff report, I want to make sure we're really looking at this holistically, as a holistic approach. So will we also be receiving a report and making a determination on the ticketing issue? And is that an issue that the council needs to make a decision on? Can the city manager make that decision without the council, if we're addressing stormwater through this method?
Well, trash, Councilmember Mason addressing your question. Absolutely, trash on the street can go into our drainage lengths and affect clogging the system, operation costs, and pollution to the bay. The issue you're raising is a separate issue that is not on staff's work plan, but I would say the body that controls staff's work plan is the city council. And so the issue you're addressing is the fact that currently, as of today, we do street sweeping across the city, but we only issue tickets on the east side of the city. That predates, my understanding, nearly 20 years or more, was brought up as an issue by the east side because of the desire to have better street sweeping and collect more trash. How do you do that? You make the cars move? How do you make the cars move? You issue tickets. And so fast forward, we find ourselves today where we are ticketing on one side of town, but we are not ticketing on another side of town. And what that means is some cars don't move, and you do a not as efficient job of sweeping the street. And so if you want to sweep the streets better, you make the cars move. And making the cars move typically means having some punitive function to make the cars move. The current status quo has been the status quo for some time, and should the city council direct staff to do that, we can embark on that process. That process will have operational impacts on the number of personnel that have to go before the street sweepers to issue tickets, et cetera. That is not on our work plan. Should the city council direct that? I would call that a strategic initiative that we can mobilize around and take whatever council direction there is. That is a totally separate issue from what we're talking about now. All of the critical improvements that were identified in 2014 and the O&amp;M costs that we can't make are not connected to the street sweeping issue. We have those costs, the system is deteriorated, we know it's deteriorated, we can't cover our operating costs, our fund is at 40%. is at $46,000 and we have millions of projects that can't get done. Has absolutely nothing to do with whether we decide to ticket on the east side or not.
Okay, that's, you're saying the stormwater hasn't, the stormwater drainage has nothing to do with why we ticket on the east side and not the west side?
The, if cars move, if they're, for example, forced to move, we can do a better job sweeping the streets and potentially less trash goes into the drains that has to be sucked out. That likely, probably, yes, has been O and M cost. What I'm saying is that delta has nearly no bearing on the core rationale to improve the health of our stormwater fund that is going negative, only has $46,000, has millions of dollars of unmet needs that we know about, and we've only been able to fund projects when they fell and crumbled.
Right. And I'm not arguing that, but I am, but I am arguing that there's an equity issue here that we're about to embark on a potential increase of a payment for our residents on the east side who are already paying tickets that the west side is not paying. And so I'm just saying that if we look at this approach holistically in the middle of an international pandemic, the cost is gonna not be as great to individuals living on the west side as it will be to individuals living on the east side. So this is an issue that Councilmember Marty Medina did bring up in the fall. My understanding was that we were gonna be receiving some kind of a report in the first quarter of this year and I want to make sure that we're still gonna be receiving it and that we're gonna be able to make a decision. And if we make that decision as a council to treat both, all of San Bruno the same, then by the time we actually get to a vote, we may already be, this may be a non-issue, depending on obviously where we go.
Sure, so let me clarify a couple of things in that. Addressing parking and ticketing and street sweeping to address the fact that we are ticketing on the east side and not ticketing on the west is not on staff's work program. Staff is not opposed to that. We take our direction from the city council. And so yes, Councilmember Marty Medina did bring that up. Should the city council direct staff to work on that, either through the strategic initiative process or through some other process, we will embark on that. We take our direction from staff and should the city council say, do that, we will do that. Even if we do that, that will not change not one recommendation in this report or the challenges that we face. Yes, to issues that are connected to the stormwater system, but as far as cost, health, threat, financial threat to the general fund, totally bifurcated different issues. So staff is not working on that now. We, so directed from the city council, we can work on that. We are not preparing a study session or anything to that nature because we have a work plan that has been identified by council through your strategic initiatives and that is what we're working on. Should the city council decide to direct us otherwise, we of course will adapt, reshift and execute.
Okay, okay. So the next question is in regards to why, why now? And so City Manager Grogan, I actually commend you for taking this on. I mean, I think that this clearly is overdue, but I do have to ask why now? Why not, you know, why not prior to COVID? Why not next year? Why now? I mean, it's just such a tough time for people right now.
Absolutely. The fiscal health of the city and of the general fund is of paramount importance. When I interviewed for this job two and a half years ago, the city council had a list of revenue strategies and were considering which ones to embark on and in what order. And we created a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project and again, forthrightly went about addressing it. And, you know, I would say we've had a number of successes and we have done a significant job to help turn around the situation in the direction that we were headed in. This is the next problem, right? I think we all wish COVID wouldn't have happened and we would be addressing this and a potential average $9 a month increase. Should the council say yes? And we did have to deal with COVID. This is before you because of the frankly, financial and safety imperative. And the city council can say, you know what, due to what's going on, not now. Or we presented a number of alternatives and one of them is essentially having a mutual impact by delaying a water and wastewater increase and restoring health to the third prompt of our water system, a critical component that is threatening the health of the general fund. And so this is being brought for you because professionally, we believe that that's our duty.
And you're not, I just want to be clear, you're not delaying it, you're actually, you're deferring it, right, to?
That's enough of the city council. You can delay it, you can defer it. We are, in the alternative that we presented, it was to delay that increase. The city council could say we're delaying it indefinitely. We want to delay it a year. Or you know what, we're making a decision based on what's in front of us. Let's say no to, no for next, no for this year and let's talk about that for next year and not put a date on it.
Okay. And then when are the, when were the water rate increases supposed to end?
2122 would be the fifth year of the 5% rate increases. So that would be 25% over five years. It began in fiscal year 1718 and so we are four years in.
Okay, but they, okay, but they've been increased since '09, is that right?
I believe that, I believe that that is, that is correct. Typically, utility rates do increase because capital and O and M costs. What we're, what I was articulating and what's articulated in the staff report is the water and wastewater unfortunately had found itself in a similar position that we're in now, which is while the funds weren't going negative, there was not enough revenue to cover the capital costs. And so there needed to be a significant step up in the charges and the city council authorized five years of 5% rate increases for the water and sewer fund. And so we are now four years into that, having increased rates by 20% over the last four years.
Okay, and I, yeah, if we could get an update, that would be great, but I think from what I read, they've been consistently going up since '09 every year. And I don't know if staff might say anything, but I believe it's, it's been like a decade now, so.
The last, the water rate study prior, previous to this one was done in 2012 that I am aware of. So, you know, five years through that and then the next cycle started in 1718 fiscal year to 2122, as the city manager mentioned.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my other concern is the likelihood of voter turnout. So voter turnout is already low. This was an incredibly unique year, but voter turnout is normally low on an off presidential year election and I just can't even imagine this, like, this method. I mean, what, what is the likelihood, what is the likelihood of voter turnout? What is, what numbers are we talking? I honestly don't know and I'd like to hear from you, what, you know, what percentage of San Bruno would actually vote?
So we do not have any statistics on what percent of the city would vote. I'll mandate all mail process to property owners. And so it is just not residents that live in San Bruno. It will go to the property owners wherever their address of record is. And so unfortunately, I can't give you any statistics on how many people would choose that, given COVID-19.
Okay.
I would say that we did have a all mail-in ballot in November 20 and had almost record turnout. There, so, you know, I think there's a process by which to inform the public and get them to pay attention. And you're absolutely right. This process is gonna require a robust community outreach process and we're ready to embark on that should the city council direct us.
Okay, I'll hold the remainder of my questions. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on council that has questions at this time? Okay, we have, let's go to the public comments. We have two members of the public that have their, their hands raised. City Clerk?
Paul Wapinski?
I'm here.
Hi, Paul. Whenever you're ready.
Hi. I read the agenda packet and listened to the brief and the fees haven't been raised since 1994, so my question is why not? And the next question came to my mind was, what's the water department, the city manager and the council been doing for the last 26 years? You know, what else in the city is deteriorating that we don't know about? You know, what were we funding instead of this? If we didn't increase the fees 50 cents a month for the last 20 years, we wouldn't be in this predicament. And is it correct that we'll be getting a $9 rate increase and 5% per year? The next question I have is, is this the city, this, I think you just answered it. It's just gonna be a mail-in only election. How is that mail-in determined or approved? Don't we have to have an ability to vote in person? The next thing is the brief from Wyman said this will take 30 years to complete. So my question is, is our current system gonna last that long or are we too late in the process? You know, what's the life expectancy of the system that we have now? And how will the fees increase over the next 30 years? Not just the $9 per month plus the 5% for five years is gonna go on for the next 30? I think the postponing is a bad idea. You know, it does, it really does nothing. It's like not going to the desk when your teeth hurt. You know, you're gonna pay for it in one way or the other. You might as well get it while you can. And after saying all that, I think we're screwed and we gotta do it. I mean, but I think the city needs to be more fiscally responsible and forward-looking for the residents in the future. This is really a disaster. It doesn't look good. On the issue that was brought up about the master plan, it seems to me it's like pretty simple. If the council approves the plan and they should fund it at the same time and it gets executed, you know, then you don't get to sidetrack, sidetrack on other issues and say, we gotta fund this and that. You know, you already did the funding and it's, it goes down the line. And the last thing is, a pet peeve of mine is on the briefs. You know, the definition of brief is shortened to the point and I think the staff could delete a lot of spur-fullest information and shorten the length of the meetings. I mean, it's already, what, two hours and 45 minutes into this. You know, it's like Sergeant Friday used to say, you know, just the facts, ma'am. And that way the decision makers get the information they need and then anything else they can ask questions later. And it would help the public from having to listen to all the stuff that they don't need or don't want to hear. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is Beau Smith. Trying to get you unmuted, Mr. Smith. One moment, I'm having some technical difficulties. Hi, Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
They can, thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, my question was pretty simple and straightforward. It's about the bonds. And no, there's, there's a general bond and then there's a revenue bond. And I wasn't quite clear on what kind of bond issuing you were planning on in the presentation. I'd like to hear more about that. Thank you.
For the question, next, please.
Uh, one moment. Next we have John Lampros, just one moment. Hi, John, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. Hello, city council. Hope you're all doing well. My question is more on the costs associated with this program. I didn't see anything in the presentation of what it would cost to basically go through the entire city and figure out what the impermeable area is per parcel, in addition to whatever the cost would be to, for the election and so on. And I definitely hope that that can be included somewhere for your consideration and for public viewing as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next we have Robert Rico. Hi, Robert, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and City Council, now is not the time to drastically raise the storm drain and flood protection fees as being proposed. Please postpone the beginning of any rate increase due to the current COVID-19 pandemic when many residents are either out of a job or working reduced hours. Your proposal does not seem to specify exactly which portions of the storm drain in specific streets will be upgraded, increased in size, allowing greater flow and have broken or restricted sections fixed. I'm not for increasing fees now for a to-be-determined-at-a-later-time locations. I ask you not to undertake this at this point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. City Clerk, I'm not seeing any other speakers at this time?
Neither am I.
Okay, so that will conclude public input. Thank you everyone for your comments. And now we'll bring it back to city council unless city manager wants to address anything or if not, we will, we can go back to council for additional questions, deliberations, et cetera.
If the city council would like, we could address some of the questions. I think some of them were mentioned, but we can articulate. So I see some heads, some heads nodding.
Yes, please.
Juan and I will begin and Director Tan will again back me up. So one of the questions was, we're gonna do these improvements over 30 years. Will the system last? Clarification, the backbone improvements, the most critical, are projected to be done over 10 to 15 years, with the most critical ones done first. In the 2022 and the 2027 bond, they will be paid back over 30 years. So they will be 30-year bonds. Does there have to have the ability for someone to vote in person? The answer to that is no. This is required to be an entire mail-in ballot process. The master plan was done in 2014, I believe, was one question. Another question was, how would we calculate the impervious square footage and has that been budgeted? That has already been done. The fee study includes nearly over 100 pages and has an impervious calculation for every parcel by APN number included. There is an appeals process because while there was a methodology for that, we know that someone may appeal it. And we talked in the staff report about we will utilize staff as well as will Dan to conduct the first round of appeals. If you can imagine, there may be significant appeals in year one and year two, but once you adjudicate those, the, for the most part, the impervious surface area is not changing unless there's an improvement done on the property and through the planning department and subsequent GIS mapping over the years, we can account for that. And so that is in there. The city council funded that effort last year through last year's budget when they approved embarking on this project as well as funding for some of the public outreach efforts. The election will be conducted by the city clerk's office and so thus we will use staff time, already budgeted staff time. There will be additional cost for producing the ballot materials and mailing those out and we are calculating those costs now. Average postage for a citywide mailing is roughly $5,000 to $6,000. And so we will have to see if we need a budget amendment for the, for the two mailings that are required. And so we, we will have to see if we need a budget amendment for the, for the two mailings that are required.
Yeah, and then the, the life expectancy question, it's about 50 years. That's typical for any improvements.
The life expectancy of these improvements are, as noted in the staff report, somewhere between 40 to 50 years. It's mentioned in the staff report that the new concrete boxes and PVC boxes have a longer lifespan. And so hence, the longer lifespan and bonding and paying for that over time. Oh, how we will bond? The, what is envisioned is not GO bonds that require another vote of the people, the public to authorize, but we are looking at lease revenue bonds or certificates of participation, which can be executed based on the revenue, based on the revenues from the fee if it's adopted and done quickly. That concludes the response, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. Additional questions or deliberation from colleagues? Here we go, okay. Hands are going up. Counsel, all, all kinds of hands. Councilmember Salazar, and then we're gonna go to Councilmember Hamilton.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, for starters, you know, the, the timing of this is, is really unfortunate. And for a number of reasons actually, because, you know, I was, I have been a strong proponent of doing our infrastructure upgrades from the very beginning. And this, this was one piece that was left behind and, and because the process is so onerous, we never had an appetite to take it on before now. And there was always concerns about, would we be successful? And there was always that trepidation that kept us from moving forward on these things. And when we finally decided to move forward on the, the upgrades for water and sewer, you know, I was, I was hesitant to move forward on that as well, but it was necessary. And we, you know, we've been making just leaps and bounds, so much progress on those systems. And our stormwater system has just been, you know, decaying. It's been neglected. And it, it does come up every year when we talk about budget. It's always mentioned how deficient we are in, in funding those repairs and how necessary they are, how important they are. Yet this process, because, you know, this, this particular increase is placed on the tax rule rather than just implemented as a fee, we have to go through some extra hoops to get this done. And so I am glad that we are finally talking about this, that we're finally, you know, moving forward on a, on a process to put this out there. So unfortunate that it's taken six years since we did that study to finally get to this point. Also very unfortunate that, you know, the timing that this happens to land in the middle of a pandemic and a huge economic downturn where a lot of people are being impacted. And so I had a lot of concerns. I knew this was coming up. I appreciate that staff gave us a heads up and gave us a report ahead of times. And I did have a lot of time to go through and look through that. We've had an opportunity to ask questions offline. And I, I think one thing that makes it more palatable to me is the fact that because it's going on a tax rule, nobody's gonna see this increase until the next property tax bill comes out, which will be at the end of this calendar year. And so that, that won't be an immediate hit. And if we are in favor of deferring the remaining increase on the, on the water and sewer fees, then those, that lack of increase, I don't know if it's actually, it's not a decrease, but it's a lack of an increase would happen prior to that time. And so I, I think that helps alleviate some of that. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's necessary and we have to address this. I, I think I would be a little more hesitant if it wasn't a process that's gonna still involve a lot of public input. The public has to approve this. We, we can't approve this on our own. We can bring it forward for them to vote on. But it will be a public process. The, the public gets a, gets a vote in whether or not this happens. And I, I hope that we can be successful in convincing the public. We heard from, from, you know, some members of the public that are in favor. They, they recognize that this is something that's been deferred far too long and we do need to move it ahead. So, you know, with, with that, you know, I'm, I'm going to be supporting this. I definitely feel that we've you know, definitely in need of doing this. We, we have to get it out. We have to get the ball rolling. It, it'll be, you know, this is gonna consume, just the process of getting the, getting the election going and getting that approval is gonna consume half the year. It'll put us farther down the road. We'll get a little bit more time to discuss the actual rate. But it, it does seem that another $100 per year on a typical home should be fairly, you know, absorbable by, by most people. Being that it goes on, on, on property tax. In some cases, that could even be something that gets, that you can get a credit on your taxes for. So there's a number of benefits for having it done that way. I, I did have a question. When the point was raised about the, the correction that the city attorney made about, you know, what, what is covered and what's not covered. And I wanted a clarification on whether salaries for employees that work in, in this group is also covered. It, it sounds like this would be the sole source of revenue for that operation. And so I would imagine that salaries and future salary increases would have to be absorbed by, are any changes in that increase as well. And I can, let's see, I don't know that I have a lot of other questions. I think most everything else was addressed somewhere in the presentation, including, you know, corrections for any future additions and ADUs and how that would be addressed. And it sounds like tho, those things would be, an adjustment would be made at the time that those projects go forward. And the only other thing is, I, I, I wanted to echo a comment made by one of the speakers in terms of the, the brevity of, of presentations. I'm, I'm always a fan of, of, you know, doing less. And, and I know that staff does a lot of work behind the scenes and they go through a lot of effort to make sure that that information is getting out to the public. But, you know, I, I, I believe I, I made the statement before about our COVID-19 presentations where if you get too much information out there, it becomes noise. And so we do have to be very measured in what we're putting out there, understanding the audience and, and our residents' appetite for a lot of nitty-gritty details versus higher level, you know, concepts. We, we get their full reports, we read the full reports and we have an opportunity to ask questions. But I, I know that, you know, the report also included 100 pages, as the city manager mentioned, of, of all the APNs. I don't know that that added any value really to the, to the presentation. That's an appendix that could have been put online somewhere. Then I, I think it would have sufficed to say that a typical, you know, R1 residence is gonna be considered 60% unless they, they dispute it. And having 100 pages of those APNs was kinda, in my opinion, it didn't add a lot of value. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
But Council, Councilmember Salazar, you did ask the question, I think, to staff in regards to, to staff costs.
Yes, and I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Mayor. So I think the short answer to Councilmember Salazar's question is yes. You can't maintain service repair or operate the storm drainage system or replace or upgrade it without paying for employee salaries to, to do so.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton?
So, I agree with, with what Councilmember Salazar said regarding the timing of this. It's absolutely unfortunate. I think we're all gonna agree on that one. That, but, but, I mean, but we are where we are. And this, my general feeling about the whole thing is that, like probably all of us, I wish we didn't have to face this now. But this isn't something that we can, that we should mortgage the future for. By, just by continuing to delay it. I do have a question before, having other, some other comments. And that had to do with the, the PEGO. Was I, was I correct in hearing that it was anticipated that there would be $18 million in PEGO over the life of this enterprise? Was that the number that was shared?
Yes, that's correct.
So is that level of PEGO necessary? Given that over the course of the first number of years, the entire, the entire system is gonna be replaced?
Yeah. So important note, when we say the entire system is gonna be replaced, the 2014 master plan only looked at the backbone system. That doesn't include all of the connector networks. And so we could go back up and pull up the map. We're talking about those main spines. There is a whole host of collector for every, almost every residential street in the city that was not covered. And we know that they are known unknowns and those are gonna have to be, have to be replaced as well. So yes, we believe that $18 million is appropriate. And it gives us, we're essentially bonding for what we need now and then we transition to PEGO.
Okay, thank you. So if we were to move ahead with this, I would absolutely want to couple it with foregoing, at least for the near future, for the next couple of years at least, the year five of the water sewer increases. Just to, you know, just to offset it, offset the cost for the, for the residents. My, my biggest concern is the outcome of that vote. We're in a unique place right now where all five of the seated council members participated in an election within the last year. So all five of us have been out, outing the pavements, talking to, talking to residents. And I think all of us would agree, I mean, the, the, one of the most universal things that people would tell us was, oh my God, the water rates. And I'm just, I'm very concerned that we'll, that we're gonna go through this effort, the, the effort and the expense of the election and, and get an unfavorable result. And I don't know if that could be, if, if that could be mitigated by waiting or not. It's, you know, it's not something that I, that, that I don't think we can predict, but it's absolutely a concern.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you. I wanna start, I have a couple of prepared comments. I've been thinking about this a lot. But I do appreciate the city manager sticking to a plan. This has been kicked down the road for many years. And the, the City Council in the last few years has been building up the financial sustainability for our city. And this is another step. I, I see it. It's clear. The timing's horrible, of course, right? The timing's absolutely terrible. But what are we gonna do? Kick, kick the can down another year? When, when is it ever the right time to start paying more? I don't wanna pay more. I'm sure nobody wants to pay more, but when it comes down to it, I'm gonna vote yes on this for my part. As a property owner, I will go down and, and, and turn my, turn my, I guess, you can mail it in, but you can also drop it off. I think, I think I want some clarity on that, that you could take your protest or your ballot and you could drop it off at City Hall. I like to drop my ballots off or vote in person. But we should learn from our, our mistakes. For, for many years, the water and sewer systems were not maintained. It was only by a lawsuit that the city did anything for sewer. So we don't wanna wait for a lawsuit to come out of our stormwater. That, that'll make it even worse, where we don't control it. It'll be, though we push down our throats like our water rate increases were. That's why those increases were so high. Is because we were forced to upgrade our system in an advanced, timely manner. And, well, they are where they are, they are now because of it. So we can't, we can't make that same mistake and defer the cost and just not do anything about it. This past year, the, the council figured out how, how hard it was to balance a budget with less revenue. Well, the same thing's gonna happen when we continue paying out for what, stormwater improvements if we don't have the money to do them. We're gonna have to cut somewhere else from our general fund. And in this past year, we delayed eight deferred hiring and capital projects of $8 million. Where are we gonna cut another million from? We already have four vacant police officer positions. We already have two vacant firefighter positions. What's next, right? It's a shame that, that since 1994, that wasn't thought out well. But we, we're inheriting this problem and we need to address it. My, my questions aren't regarding the need for this. My, my questions are also around the fairness of this. Equal and fair are not the same thing. This city is divided in at least six watersheds. And the overwhelming percentage of those improvements are needed in two of those watersheds. So my question is, first for our city attorney, is the legal footing in, in passing this by 218? Being that, and I have to read this because I don't have this memorized, but it's my understanding that local governments must make sure that no property owner's fee is greater than the proportionate cost to provide the property-related service to his or her parcel. So somebody in a watershed, and if you can, if we can have staff, please pull up page 35 of the slide deck. On that page, one of the watershed's improvements is a total of $220,000. Identified in the street board. And I refer, I referred to that area in our city. It's the southern east part of our city. I call them the Holy Lands. It's where all the streets are saints or Santa Helena, Santa Dominga, San, San everything. So in the plan, in that watershed, there's $220,000 of improvements. It's not this 30 million. So legally, are we unsure footing to say that someone that lives in those waterlands, that their water doesn't touch that spine that's gonna cost us millions? How is that proportionate? And legal? For a increase over 30 years for improvements that aren't really affecting that property? So I'll pause on that one, because that's a really big question.
You're Councilmember Medina. I'd be happy to take a stab initially at that. And certainly Devon, Jimmy and our consultant can, can add anything in at the end that I missed. So I, I think we, we did address this in some detail in the responses to your written questions. But to summarize, the, in an answer to your first question, yes, it is legal. It is absolutely consistent with Proposition 218. It has been used in the, in other cities. The methodology of using impervious surface has been used in, in other cities and successfully so. so. And part of the reason for that is recognizing that the proportionate cost of using the system is not necessarily just a feature of geographical happenstance. Where somebody happens to live isn't the only thing that affects the, um, their contribution to the, the storm drain system. And, uh, what, uh, cities have found and what consultants have found in implementing Proposition two eighteen for this is that the use of impervious surface is a much more broadly fair and equitable system of allocating the costs of the system to all property owners rather than a system that disproportionately penalizes a, a few property owners and also disproportionately advantages a few property owners merely by virtue of where, where they happen to live. And so, the principle is that you, your, your bill shouldn't depend on where you happen to live. It should instead depend on the relative contribution of your property to the city's impervious, uh, surface and the, the storm drain system. So, that's, that's the general principle. Um, and you know, of course, there's a lot of different ways to look at it. Uh, some cities may in the past have decided initially to split up their city into, um, watersheds, not just for purposes of identifying where improvements are located or where, uh, or how the geography is, but also for purposes of, um, of, of imposing fees for stormwater. Um, the, the few cities that have used those kinds of approaches have only done so in particular areas and have done so historically for many, many decades. And so, uh, what we found when we talked with our outside consultant and also outside council is it's almost impossible for a city to switch from one methodology to the other because what you end up with are really huge swings in the amounts of money that properties pay. So, if right now, the city council is understandably concerned about a nine dollar a month increase in, in the cost, uh, I think they would be very concerned to see the, the numbers that would result from, from a system in which, uh, properties are allocated costs essentially based on geography and where they, they happen to be. So, so that's a, just a brief answer to the question. It is absolutely consistent with Proposition two eighteen and, uh, represents the overwhelming, um, favorite way of cities to address these things in a way that, that is fair and equitable to everyone.
Okay. I, I appreciate that answer. Um, I wasn't contesting the impervious part. That was not part of my question. I totally agree with it, with the calculation. It makes a lot more sense than square footage of the overall parcel, but nonetheless, um, thank you for, thank you for your answer. Um, Mr. Mayor, my next question is about, is about the flexibility in our, in what we're approving today, or not approving today, to, to bring it to our voters of how much flexibility we will have in tweaking that, or is whatever is in this report today, is it, is it, is it, you can't change it? Um, so, um, that's the question I have. And then, along with the bonds, um, how does the, how would the potential issuance of this debt impact the debt capacity for other projects and needs? Um, two that come into mind. Three, uh, one is the Recre- Recreation Aquatic Center. We've talked about potentially using debt for that. We also talked about debt for city net services. We've al- we've also talked, um, a little bit about debt for parking structure. Um, so, what, what does this, how does this impact our future, uh, issuers, issuance of bonds? Um, and tonight's, um, vote, how flexible are we in that bond issuance? Um, it seems like, um, and we have the bond expert there, that the, the rates are really, really low right now, and if we're looking at increasing and borrowing more money in the future, um, I think the, the percentages were in that plan. Um, just wanted to see about the flexibility there. Um, I'm concerned, which we, which we heard in Measure G from, from some of the, uh, opponents of it, they didn't like it there was no sunset clause, right? So, can we put a thirty-year sunset clause on this? Um, will we have a special oversight committee to oversee this? Um, another question I have, um, is when a new, when a new development comes onboard, that property will be assessed. Um, we have a lot of projects that are currently, uh, we're looking forward to, and how, how do those properties start paying? It'll be probably just by the same function, I, I'm, I'm guessing, I, I'm not sure. Um, and those are the questions I have for now.
City Manager?
Sure. Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Marty Medina. Uh, I think I have most of that, uh, and I'm gonna ask for a little help if I can't remember all of it. Um, so, question one was about flexibility. If you say yes to the resolution tonight, what flexibility you have? The council has flexibility on the rate, um, if you say yes to the fee study and the methodology that's being presented before you. And so, as we talked about in the presentation, your final decision on the rate, uh, would be due on the calendar, which calls, uh, for that to happen on March twenty-third. Um, with, uh, with regard to a oversight body or a sunset, neither a sunset nor an oversight body are currently, uh, envisioned, this would be treated like a enterprise utility, uh, similar to the water and wastewater rates. The money for that can only be used for a stormwater system, uh, whereas for, uh, general purpose revenue that can, uh, technically go for, uh, any other purpose, that's typically where you see a, a citizen revenue oversight commission. Uh, this, uh, budgeting, these stormwater revenues would come before the city council, uh, just like budgeting for, uh, capital improvements and O and M for the water and wastewater utility, uh, through the annual budgeting process, uh, with presentations. Uh, no sunset because what's envisioned is flipping the son of a dime where we, uh, cover, we can cover our O and M and pay for projects as you go. So, we're never in this situation again where we need to do a, a, a large increase, uh, to cover our expenditures. And so, uh, we know after these bonds are retired in thirty years, there'll, there'll be, uh, likely other, uh, environmental, uh, requirements and improvements needed to the system. And so, what's put before you is, uh, to, uh, keep that rate in, in effect, and the city council can always lower that, uh, that rate. So, um, bond capacity, uh, would this impact bond capacity with regard to any other debt financing that the city is consider? Uh, considering, the top-level answer is no. Bond capacity or debt capacity is a function of revenue. If we increase our revenue through new fees, we will have more ability to take out bonds because we have the ability to pay those. Our ability to pay bonds now is constrained by our revenue portion. If through this fee, we have more revenue, that automatically increases our bonding capacity and those ratios that we present to you in the budget. I believe that that, um, answered your questions. If there's one that I missed, please let me know.
The, the taking advantage of the low, the really super low, well, low interest rate environment now and, um, it being potentially more front-loaded?
So, I, I'll, I'll address that one. This is, uh, Mike Medvee. Um, we do have, uh, very good rates right now, um, no doubt about that. We also have, uh, very low inflation, and this fee is tied to, um, an escalation factor, the construction cost index for the San Francisco Bay Area. Um, with, there, there, there is flexibility. There's flexibility to either issue bonds or to construct facilities on a page-and-go basis. Um, I, I believe that we've, uh, structured this fee, um, so that it, it has the ability to, uh, handle many different scenarios in the future, and really the escalation factor is, is what helps it to do that. Um, the, the way that, uh, the markets typically go, and of course, there's no guarantee, but the way that markets typically go is that when interest rates go up, um, the inflation follows, and when interest rates go down, inflation follows as well. So, while we definitely wanna take advantage of the low interest rates, um, right now to get as much funding as we possibly can, um, if things go the other way, um, the, the fee will increase, uh, at a higher rate than, than it, than it is, um, at the moment, and we should be able to, uh, to cover most, if not all, of the, of the costs. Uh, again, it's not a guarantee that we'll be able to, but this, uh, this fee is structured to offer that flexibility and to be able to, uh, keep up with costs and keep up with whatever, uh, things might happen, um, in the market. And then, also, um, just, I, you, you had made a comment about the, uh, uh, the, the bond issuances and the, the plans, uh, as they were presented in the, in the, uh, financial model. And, um, the, uh, what, I think the, the best way to look at the, uh, fee study is that it, uh, we determined a fee that would cover the costs of all the facilities, and then we, um, justified the fee with, um, with the nexus and the proportionality requirements. Um, so what, what that does is it creates a revenue stream. And as that revenue stream comes in, um, we, we work within those constraints to, to get you guys, the facilities built as, as quickly as possible, uh, at the best interest rates, and really try to do as much with that revenue stream as, as we possibly can. Um, but we're not, uh, we're not committing to the, uh, financing plan that's in the cash flow. Um, the cash flow was more a tool just to make sure that we got the right fee so that we can get all of those, uh, facilities funded, but also to do it efficiently and to get them funded in a timely manner.
Thank you for that. Um, so there is plenty of flexibility, um, in, in, in the debt issuance?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I guess one question that wasn't answered, I mean, um, was for, for new properties and new development, as they come onboard, um, that they will be assessed based on their impervious area and, and lot size, and is that how that works?
Yeah. So, if a, if a piece of undeveloped property becomes a residential unit, um, then we will apply that impervious factor to its square footage, uh, as soon as it gets developed. We do, uh, when we administer these districts, we monitor the land use every year, and we keep track of, uh, new construction and parcels that have new improvement value. And the, uh, the assumption is that as those properties develop, um, it, it won't necessarily, um, be just extra money for us to, uh, it, you know, it won't be gravy. Uh, they are gonna generate more runoff, and we'll need to consider, um, whether we need to, uh, add to the improvements. Uh, if there's a really large development that comes in and, um, we start to have issues in one of the areas, then we, we may need to schedule more improvements. We'll have the revenues, uh, to do that because of the proportionality of the fee.
Right. And, and one of, one of the answers I received from staff was how these new developments that would be on, that were large enough that had a high flow, normally, they have retention basins that are required to be put in. Like, the flooding would be a lot worse if, if a huge development was put on the hill and the water would come streaming down, but these, these developments would now require to have retention basins that would, or pipes that would slowly leak that water out, so it, it doesn't create an, uh, a, an additional, uh, flooding, uh, capacity downstream.
Um, yeah, the, so I, I do remember, uh, Jimmy saying something like that, and it makes sense that the newer homes have, uh, more stringent requirements on, um, how they deal with, uh, stormwater. If we do end up in a situation, um, where we're, uh, where, where we have more revenues than are, than are necessary, uh, to complete the plan, um, you know, it, and I, another, another one I forgot to address earlier is that, is that the, these, these bonds will be a, a, a limited obligation. This is, this is kind of, uh, kind of like an enterprise. So, the revenues come in and then you issue bonds and the, and the fees go, uh, just to pay those bonds. Um, there, there's no, um, uh, there, there, it's, it won't be a, it won't be a general obligation of the city, I guess, is, is what I'm saying. Um, but also, if we, i- if we look at our whole plan, the, the debt service, the ongoing, uh, Pago that we need, the operations and maintenance, and realize that we're getting too much in revenues, um, you know, we can't just transfer that over the general fund and, and use it. We have to lower the fees, uh, to match, uh, whatever is needed. But we'll have capital reserves and some other little accounts sitting around that are, uh, that are justified. But, uh, if the, if the fee is too much, then we'll have to lower the, the amount that we levy.
Thank you for that. Um, you reminded me, um, so basically, if this were to, to come to be, um, we would have a new enterprise fund and it'd be a stormwater enterprise fund. Is that accurate?
Let's say I take that. Uh, we have a stormwater, stormwater enterprise fund. It's just unfortunately not acting as an enterprise fund.
Okay, okay, an operating enterprise fund.
Because it doesn't cover its costs. Uh, so, we have a stormwater, uh, enterprise utility fund, uh, and the money would, would go there.
But, but I think in this presentation, there was some discussion, uh, or of how money was, was floating back and forth, but once, that shouldn't happen, and, or it shouldn't really happen, once we start designating this money in this method, or, or how is that accounted for?
So, what you saw in that chart was it was the stormwater enterprise fund, but it had transfers in and sometimes transferred out from the general fund. With this fee, there would no longer need to be an interplay, uh, in, of the general fund in our stormwater fund. So, that was ceased.
Got it. Mr. Mayor, I think, um, that's my last, uh, question for now. Um, the, clearly, um, I'll just say, I'm in favor of keeping, uh, the rates, water rate increases to kinda your, your exchange in that cost increase, um, to, uh, to just not have it for the next year. And then, when we do the next, next cost, um, costing for our, our rate increases, then we could do, do, do that in year two. But, um, it's definitely, to move forward, it, it would be to suspend that rate increase for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other hands up from, uh, colleagues, I'll assume that that's the end of the questions or comments from all of the council.
Sir, um, Mayor Medina?
Yes, Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I just wanna, just to make, just to highlight and, uh, make sure that this is, that I'm clear on this. Um, so the process, um, is tonight is hearing number one. Uh, then, then if, if approved by council, then the mail-out ballots are gonna be sent to property managers, assuming that fifty-one percent of the total number of property managers that receive this do not write back. Um, then there's gonna be a hearing number two on March eleventh. And then, after that hearing, there's gonna be mail-out ballots to property managers throughout San Bruno. And then, on May tenth, the last day to submit the ballots would really end the process. May eleventh, the ballots would be counted, and fifty-one percent, and this is where I wanna make sure I'm, I'm getting this right, fifty-one percent of the votes that came in would have to support the increase for it to, for this item to then move forward, um, and be effective, and the reporting of the, uh, ballot totals will be made to the council on May twelfth. Did I get that right?
Uh, in, in, in broad strokes, yes, but the dates, uh, were, were not correct. Uh, not, not sure where, uh, those are coming from. I can go over it, uh, more time?
I'm sorry. It's, um, it's on, I, I should've taken it from the staff report. I took it from our memo, the memo that was sent to council on December, that twenty, December twenty-third memo?
Yes.
So, okay. So, if you, I, I guess I'm more interested in the process than, than the dates, though.
Okay. Uh, so, well, if, if council, uh, will be okay, why don't I bring up this chart, and we can just talk from that really quickly, uh, so both, uh, we see and the public are seeing the same thing really quickly? So, uh, what we're talking about today, uh, on January twelfth is a resolution to initiate the process. Again, that's beginning, uh, the first round of the Prop two eighteen notices, uh, which are scheduled to go out on January twenty-second. I will say, uh, what's not on this count- I will say, uh, what's not on this calendar is all of our public outreach. And so even before that notice goes out, we're planning a tri-fold mailer that will go out to provide information to people. So there will be public outreach, meetings, newsletter, news articles, et cetera, um, in between all of these dates, but as far as the two eighteen process, that's what we're talking about. So on January twenty-second, uh, first round, uh, notices will go out, those are required to be out forty-five days before the final date. On March twenty-third, uh, we will have what's called a pub, a protest hearing, a, a public hearing, uh, where anyone protesting, uh, the increase, uh, will either have submitted their, their written protest or will come to that meeting. Uh, if, uh, fifty percent plus one, not fifty-one percent, fifty percent of the people plus one person, um, uh, protest, then we do not proceed to step two and the effort is over. If under fifty percent, um, if fifty percent are, are under, uh, protest, then we proceed to step two. Step two will begin on March thirty-first. Before I go there, let me back up. On March twenty-third is the final day for the city council to decide the amount of the increase, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that will go in round two. And so you, based on the recommendation and the resolution, if you adopt that, that's the maximum, and you can still go lower than that, but that final decision is March twenty-third.
Okay.
Based on what happens on March twenty-third, we would send out the second round notices on March thirty-first. That is again, another forty-five-day required period, the final day to receive those ballots is targeted for May seventeenth, that's actually a little bit more than forty-five days if you're, um, if, if somebody's at home doing the math, but we wanted to make sure that we, uh, you know, we weren't running up against the deadline. Uh, and that requires, uh, in order for it to be accepted, fifty percent plus one of the, uh, parcels that receive the notice have to come, of, of, let me back up. We need fifty plus one of the return ballots to be in the affirmative. So we're gonna send the notice out, of those we get back, a majority have to say yes, or, or it doesn't go into effect.
Okay, and, and just to differentiate the two, the first mailing goes out to all property managers, and fifty-one percent of the total have to actually respond protesting for this not to move forward, whereas the second mailing, it's fifty-one percent of those who have responded.
Yes, with two corrections. It's not property managers, it's property owners.
I'm sorry, property owners, yes.
And it's not fifty-one percent, it's fifty percent plus one more person.
Oh, okay, okay. Very helpful.
Okay, and then all of this ends with July thirty-first, and again, we have to submit something to the county on July thirty-first, and that will either be the new fee because it was adopted, or the old fee at forty-six, forty-six dollars on average, so we, we get the revenue at least that we've been getting.
Okay, so ultimately, we're really, what we're really approving tonight is, is saying, go ahead and start this process, but ultimately, it's the property owners who are responsible for the payment that are gonna be deciding.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great, and then, um, I apologize if I may have missed this, but the, assuming that it is approved, what would be the effective date?
It will take effect on the property tax bills, uh, for twenty, for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. I believe those first bills are due in November, um, November, December, um, and then the next property tax payment would be due, the second installment is April of twenty-twenty-two. And I believe that the first installment is due in December, but, but it's somewhere around that November, December time frame.
And then, um, so is there, for that, the increases then, if the increases are the, and let me go back to the water increases, we talked about, um, suspending them, so is there any reason that we need that extra five percent anyway? Is there, is that something that we can, it's, it's a previous council decision, so do, would this council be able to say no more increases, or the, I don't think, I don't know if there's been an al- an analysis done of what the loss would be?
Right, so, uh, I think two-part question, two-part answer. Uh, the council can say no more, the council cannot say no more future increases, because one council can't bind the future council, but you can say, we are not gonna implement the increase for twenty-one, twenty-two. And, uh, I think we're, we're hearing sort of universal interest in doing that, and we can return to you at a subsequent meeting, I don't think we'll be able to do that by the January twenty-sixth meeting, uh, but potentially by the, the first meeting in February, so you can take that action, um, and, uh, and we, at that meeting, we can provide you information with what that does to the fund.
Okay.
Kick down, hold on.
Okay, okay, so, um, so for me, I really appreciate the staff report, um, I appreciate actually the length of the staff report because of the great impact, um, that this is gonna have on our, on our residents, honestly, because I would imagine a number of our property owners probably live here, and those that don't may be passing on the cost to their renters. Um, so I think the staff report was really clear, and the memo provided to the city council was clear, and I just wanna thank staff for that. Uh, for me, I just wanna say on the record that really the greatest disappointment is that this has been kicked down the road for twenty-four years. Um, I, I don't, you know, one more kind of baffling thing, when people talk about San Bruno and all the needs it has, that, that's just a, a really long time to be kicked down the road. So, um, so I don't, I think we have to do it, like the speaker said earlier, I don't think that, um, I don't wanna kick it down the road. Um, but I do wanna say that, uh, for me, uh, I would ask that, um, that, um, I don't know, I don't think it's time for the motion yet because the mayor hasn't spoken yet, um, but I do wanna say that I don't support any further, um, increases on the waters, on the water rate side. So, um, if we can balance the two by approving this item, um, and then not approving any more increases on the water, and I understand not future increases, but the last year of the remaining five-year increments, um, then I, I would be more amenable to this. So, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, for me, I'll, I'll get to the point, uh, I think we're, I'm, I'm kinda writing down that we're all in concurrence, that we need to move forward and do this, from what I've heard and what I've written down, and as far as, as I'd asked a question originally about deferring or suspending, word suspending has come up too, on the fifth, the final year of the five-year increase. Um, so what I'm, what I'm hearing, and again, the, the resolution is, we'll have to also do the revised one, uh, when the motion is done, but needless to say, then I would say staff needs to come back with the defer and/or suspension of the final year, uh, if this goes forward with the two eighteen, um, but to have it go forward is how I'm, how I'm, uh, wishing to have it done as well. So, uh, City Manager is, and City Attorney, uh, we have a resolution that would need action, um, a motion and a second, and I'll, also, it's to include the revision of the resolution that has been, uh, discussed.
Right.
Through the chair? Um, sorry, Councilmember Salazar.
The, the increase on the other rates is a separate action that we need to take, and I, I would recommend that we treat this resolution separately because this, this is the beginning of, of a long process, and I don't feel that it's appropriate to tie that other one. I, I think we're in agreement that we need to do that, that we wanna do that, when the time comes to approve that other, um, adjustment. I, I don't feel that it's necessary to adjust this resolution to do that, that, my, my opinion. I, I don't know that it's inappropriate to do it, I just don't feel that it's necessary.
No, and I'm not saying to modify that, I'm just saying the modification that the city attorney brought up is what I mean by modification on the resolution. Uh, what I'm saying is because of the concurrence by council, it would be for staff to look into that, but it has nothing to do with this action.
Okay.
Does that make, is that clear? Okay. Right, so is there, uh, action from council?
Through the chair, I would like to move that we introduce and approve the resolution initiating the proceedings to establish a revised storm drainage and flood protection fee.
You utilizing the revised resolution?
Yes, as, as amended, uh, in the presentation.
Uh, thank you. Is there a second?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Salazar, I just, um, I'm sorry for the motion, because I know you're on the floor, but it does say as one of the alternatives, uh, one of the alternatives that we can vote on is to...
Okay, hold on, let, let's, let's get to, we have a motion on the floor, so either it's gonna, the motion's gonna die, or we get a second, and then we'll, we'll have on the question, and then we'll go to the city attorney for clarification.
Okay. It's just my, my vote is gonna depend on the answer to the...
I, I understand. Um, okay, is there a second to the motion, or to, to the resolution? Uh, Vice Mayor, are you there? Okay, I thought you froze. No, no, I'm sorry, I thought your camera froze. Okay. Then, then the motion dies for lack of a second. So now I'm gonna have to go to the city attorney. City Attorney, you he- you heard the question that was asked in regards to the alternative?
Yeah, I, I don't recommend, I do not recommend that this resolution be encumbered with an action, uh, that is unrelated to the purpose of, of this particular item. What I do recommend is that the city council simply, uh, make a motion to direct staff after they've adopted this resolution, or, or before, as the case may be. Uh, simply direct staff to bring back a report on the, um, requested deferral of the, of the other fee at a, at a subsequent meeting, and that should take care of it.
So I'm gonna go back to what I said originally, is that I'm looking for action to pass this resolution with, as presented with the modification in the res- in the, in the language as pointed out by the city attorney. I'm also then with consensus of the council, which is already obviously there, to ask that come back, looking at deferred and/or suspended fifth year of the five-year rate increase, to have them bring that back. So that's a part of a motion, that's just direction that's being given, because we have already, we're directing staff to do that, which is separate from this action, if that ma- if that makes sense, it's not part of the resolution.
But then, um, City Attorney, Ma- Mayor Medina?
Yeah.
I don't wanna mess this up, because this is gonna be a big, you know, it's gonna be an impact, right? Um, but City Attorney's up front, I guess my question then is, but that item isn't agendized, and we'd be taking action on it? Or you say it's a direction, it's ju- we're just giving direction and there's no, no consent?
Precisely, it's, it's in the staff report, it's one of the alternatives, you can, you can give direction to staff to bring back an, an item at a subsequent meeting on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, oh, okay, I thought I had a, a hand up, okay? I'm saying no? All right, so I hope we're all, we've got it, so let's go back to the drawing board where we started. How about we go to Councilmember Salazar, and you start, and you try again?
Let me try this again. All right, so I will make a motion that we bring forward the, uh, resolution, uh, initiating the process, um, as amended in, during the presentation.
There a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion made, uh, second, Salazar, Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, thank you, staff.